Call the meeting order, please. Call roll.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. O'Neal?
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you state, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful that you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a particular response to any of your inquiries here this evening. Last, not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the Chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Come to the microphone, please, ma'am.
Microphone is 11.
The microphone at the front.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Sattler. My address is 115 Clinton River Drive, Mount Clemens, Michigan, 3043. My daughter, Bria Efridge, is a seventh grader at this school, and she got into altercation on March 1st, 4th rather, and I didn't know about the altercation until March 5th. The altercation was recorded and uploaded on Instagram. Right now, we're just trying to get work for her to do school from home. I was told on several altercations when I came here, two or three meetings now, tomorrow I'll have another meeting, that she can't do her work from home. So, we just want to finish off the seventh grade successfully and have her go to the eighth grade at another school. She's frightened, she's traumatized, she does not want to attend the school anymore. So, we're just here to go about seeing how we can have her go forth with the seventh grade. Like I said, the altercation happened on the 4th. We were pressing charges against the other girls. We were told that the other girls were getting expelled and they're back. She doesn't want to attend the school anymore. This is the first altercation she's ever been in in her entire life. She doesn't have a record, she's never been in trouble, she's a good student, so we're just trying to get work so we can finish off the seventh grade. So, how do we go about doing that? So, we asked about virtual, we asked about me picking up packets, we asked about online, and we were told, no, no, no. So, what's her rights as a student, as a 12-year-old in the seventh grade? Like I said, it was uploaded on Instagram. I talked to Deputy Simon from Macomb County. He sent the video over to Mr. Hannah. Mr. Hannah received it that Sunday night, which was the 6th, I want to say. I came the 7th, I came Monday, this past Monday. I have another meeting tomorrow with the principal here, and we just want her to go about finishing off the year without having to come with these same girls that she got into the altercation with. And after the altercation, she went back to class like it was normal, and this happened at 10 o'clock in the morning.
You stated you have a meeting with the principal tomorrow?
Yes.
All your questions should be able to be responded to you tomorrow by the building principal.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Hearing or seeing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, action items. Item 5, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda this evening, item 5A, approval of the minutes of the February 16th, 2022 regular meeting. Agenda item 5B, approval of bills for payments. The Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I dare review the minutes of the, and the board that is presenting and everything in the order.
Thank you, sir. Any input from the bills and payments from the Finance Committee? Any questions, any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda, action item, item 6, cash donation of $2,000 from Steven Sapp Jr. and Nicholas and Sapp, Inc., for Mount Clemens Science Department students to attend Science and Physics Day at Cedar Point. Madam Superintendent.
This request is going to be a two-parter. So, first of all, the students, this is for our high school science, 9th grade physical science students to attend Physics Day at Cedar Point. This is something that our kids actually haven't been able to attend the last two years because of COVID. It's something that students from all over Macomb County, all over, actually, southeast Michigan, part science students participate in this event. So, we would like you to accept this donation of $2,000 from Mr. Sapp to go towards the price of this trip. And I have a second part to that, but we'll do it twice.
Does the second part have, is it separate from?
Yes.
The first part?
It is separate from the first part, but it's part of the Cedar Point trip.
Okay.
Okay.
So, the first part is to accept the money so it can go towards the trip?
Correct. So, do you want to vote on that first and then do the second part?
Well, is the second part listed on the agenda?
It is not. I just got it today, at 2:02 PM.
We'd have to amend the agenda to add that item.
Okay. It's another donation.
Okay, so, we'll deal with item 6, the cash donation receiving, the cash donation of $2,000 from Steven Sapp Jr. of Nichols and Sapp, Inc., for the Science Department students to attend Science and Physics Day at Cedar Point. Heard the recommendation, Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, or concerns? When is this?
Okay, it's May, I probably have it on my.
May night.
May night, thank you.
They need any chaperones?
Yeah.
You know what, I think it's a golf course over here, yeah.
Any chaperones?
No, you would actually have to be at Cedar Point with the kid.
Oh, I thought I just had a ride, okay, got it.
He wants to be a bus chaperone. Unless you want to be on the bus.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. We are amending the agenda to add what, Madam Superintendent?
So, we are amending the agenda to add an additional fundraiser that Mrs. Holt has, or Mrs. Wallace, excuse me, has put forth for her students. So, what she would like to do, and the reason it's coming before the board is because this is an online fundraiser, and the board approves online fundraisers as of our policy. So, the online fundraiser is through Adopt a Classroom. The donated funds do not track into any personal accounts, nor do they become a petty cash system for students or Mrs. Wallace. Adopt a Classroom donations are specifically directed to the district, who will then complete the process for accounting and distribution, though it will be going through our business office. Adopt a Classroom increases the reach beyond the local donations while ensuring transparency and confidence in the district's use of funds. By allowing this, what we're trying to do is drop the cost as low as we possibly can. So, by adding this, we'll allow the students to have food and beverages while they're there on their trip. So, we are asking that the board approve Adopt a Classroom so that she can continue fundraiser to help pay for the entire trip.
And that's the name of the activity that the funds are being raised for, Adopt a Class?
The funds, it's through an app called Adopt a Classroom. And again, it'll go, everything will go through the business office.
Okay, are these funds for a specific activity?
Yes, they are. The funds are specifically for the Cedar Point trip.
Because I'm trying to figure out how to make, try to make this as a motion. So, I've got approvals, approval of online Adopt a Class fundraising activities for the purpose of Cedar Point trip, or something like that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's, okay, let's see. Okay, this is what I'm having, approval of the online Adopt a Classroom, Adopt a Class fundraising activity for fundraising for the Cedar Point Science Department activity. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Jay.
You were so happy they would go ahead and say that.
Moved by Member Reno.
Support.
Second, Member Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns, discussion on the motion on the floor? And it's to adopt the online fundraising activities for the funding of the Cedar Point Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Action item 7, student discipline. Madam Superintendent.
Tonight, we are bringing before you five student discipline referrals, and many of, four of them are in closed session, and one will, I'm trying to read your fingers, I can't. Three?
What, three in closed, two in open?
Three in closed, two in open.
Since we're here, let's.
Do the open first.
All right, we'll do the open ones first.
Good evening, Board.
The two cases that we will be doing in open session will be the third received in your
packet will be the first one we look at.
They don't have their packets because they aren't getting those till closed session?
Okay.
So, I can, if you wait one second, I can just go get them for you?
All right.
Okay, Paul, they're on my table in my office. Thank you.
So, my recommendation is to do as we did previously, to take a few minutes to review each case on your own, and then I'll make myself available for questions.
So, Mr. Duncan, it's student, it's number three, and what was the other number?
Number five.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll reference the student numbers when the packets arrive.
Yep.
Just to make sure we're on the same page.
Does this contain all of them, or just the two open?
Mr. Monk, it contains the entire evening closed session, so that, we have them separated by colored paper. So, the first one is after the golden rod.
Got you. So, we're looking at number three and number five, right?
Number three and number five.
Number three and number five. Thank you.
Yep.
So, the third one in order is in reference to student ID number 1810002469. Last four digits is 2469.
We're doing student number three?
Yes.
What grade is this student?
He's a 9th grader, sir.
About 13 years old? Did he come from us, from our system, 8th grade? Did we have any records of this student having any issues in the lower grades, 7th, 8th grade years?
His full discipline history from our district is printed in the packet.
Yeah, I was looking, yeah, discipline record is in all.
Yeah, I didn't go back far. Mr. Duncan?
Are there any further questions?
Yes, I have some. I've got four.
Yes, sir.
For transparency purposes, first question is, were all factors considered before expelling this student per policy 5610?
All seven factors were considered, even in the first removal.
Okay. My second question is, were any or all restorative practices conducted for the student per policy 5610?
Think you'll see a long history of attempts, restorative practices with the student, and given whatever penalty or discipline filled out by us in this year and going forward, restorative is our program.
Okay. Did this expulsion fall under policy 5610, subtitle weapons, arson, criminal sexual conduct?
Yes.
Okay, my last question, was the student given due process per policy 5611?
Student and family were afforded multiple due process meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions by the board? The recommendation from the administration is expulsion from school, whereas the parents per board policies 5610, they may submit a request for reinstatement after 150 days, school days, from the date of suspension, but the student may not be, may not be reinstated after 180 days from the date of suspension. And I think that, I think those should be expulsions, not suspensions.
Yes, it's expulsion, it is a recommendation.
Because, because then the recommendation mentions expulsion and suspension.
Yeah, sorry, we didn't catch that one.
Heard the recommendation, Chair would entertain a motion relative to the recommendation for student number three.
So moved.
Moved by Member Monk, for the expulsion of student number three for 180 days, with petition for reinstatement after 150 days. Is there a second?
Support.
Second by Member Monk, excuse me, Member Reno. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, I will refer you to the fifth recommendation, which is addressing student 1810002578, which is also a recommendation for expulsion. Oh, my apologies, that is the wrong case. Let me back up, I grabbed the wrong folder. It's actually the fourth case.
So, not five.
Student four.
And what grade was this student?
9th grade as well.
9th grade, got you.
Not a look-alike.
Not a look-alike.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was.
I'll see. I'm good.
How long has this student been with the district?
Believe student's been here for a few years. Again, a full discipline history report is printed in there.
Beginning in 2016.
Any questions by the board?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Again, for transparency purposes, I have four questions. First one is, were all factors considered before expelling this student per policy 5610?
All seven factors are considered at every removal, and this one included.
Second question is, were any or all restorative practices conducted for the student per policy 5610?
Restorative practices are used in every discipline case. You'll see in his discipline history, multiple attempts.
Third question is, did this expulsion fall under policy 5610, subtitle weapons, arson, criminal sexual conduct?
Yes.
My last question is, was the student given due process per policy 5611?
Student and family had multiple due process meetings.
Thank you. I move to approve the recommendation of the administration.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the expulsion of student number four for 180 days, and his parents are guardian, may write a letter, request a letter of reinstatement no sooner than 150 days. Second by Member Reno. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. The Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of student discipline.
So moved.
Correct, you have some requests.
Yep, we have, first case is requested at closed session.
Been moved, to move into the executive session for the purpose of student discipler hearing, and a second. Any questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Call the roll, please.
I have Monk's.
Second by Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Okay.
But then you did.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. We go into executive session at 7:0658. Chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Member Monk, second by Member McFadden, to come out of the executive session. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. The meeting is out of executive session at, what's that, 8:15?
8:15.
8:12?
8:12.
Back to regular session. Mr. Duncan?
In reference to the first case in your folder, for the discipline recommendation for the student with the final four digits of 6748, the recommendation is a long-term suspension from school totaling 30 days from the first date of removal.
I move to approve the recommendation of the administration.
Support. Moved by Dr. McFadden to support the recommendation, second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, discussions, comments on the floor? Mr. Monk?
Mr. Duncan, got four questions for you, for transparency purposes. Were all factors considered before expelling this student per policy 5610?
Yes, all seven factors were considered.
Thank you, sir. Two, were.
Chair would entertain a motion to come out of executive session. So moved. Support. Moved by Member Monk, second by Member McFadden to come out of the executive session. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
The motion carries. The meeting is out of executive session at, what's that, 8:15?
Eight.
8:12?
Eight.
Back to regular session. Mr. Duncan?
In reference to the first case in your folder, for the discipline recommendation for the student with the final four digits of 6748, the recommendation is a long-term suspension from school totaling 30 days from the first date of removal.
I move to approve the recommendation of the administration.
Support. Moved by Dr. McFadden to support the recommendation, second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, discussions, comments on the floor? Mr. Monk? Mr. Duncan, got four questions for you. For transparency purposes, were all factors considered before expelling this student per Policy 5610?
Yes, all seven factors were considered.
Thank you, sir. Two, were any or all restorative practices conducted for the student per Policy 5610?
Yes, before and as included in the conditions of return.
Okay. Three, did this expulsion fall under Policy 5610, subtitle Weapons, Arson, Criminal Sexual Conduct?
No.
Okay. Four, was the student given due process per Policy 5611?
Roll back to the third one.
Okay.
Or the last one. Not that one, the one before.
The third one.
Yeah.
Did the expulsion fall under Policy 5610, subtitle Weapons, Arson, Criminal Sexual Conduct?
The long-term suspension, yes.
Okay. And then the fourth one was, was the student given due process per Policy 5610?
Multiple times.
Thank you. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is a long-term suspension from school totaling 30 days, beginning from the first day of removal on February 15th, and other conditions as agreed to. Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the fifth student in your packet, the recommendation for a student with the last four digits 2578, the recommendation is expulsion from school, whereas the parent or custodial parent per Board Policy 5610 may submit a request for reinstatement after 150 days from the date of removal, but the student may not be reinstated before 180 school days from the date of removal.
Mr. President, I move to approve the recommendation of the administration.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to approve the expulsion from school for 180 days with, where the custodial parent or guardian may request, submit a request for reinstatement after 150 days. Is there a second? Support. Second, Member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Mr. Monk? Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Duncan, I have four questions for you. For transparency purposes, were all factors considered before expelling this student per Policy 5610?
Yes.
Thank you. Second, were any or all restorative practices conducted for the student per Policy 5610?
Multiple attempts.
Thank you. Third, did this expulsion fall under Policy 5610, subtitle Weapons, Arson, Criminal Sexual Conduct?
No.
Okay, thank you. And the fourth one, was the student given due process per Policy 5611?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns?
I'm sorry, who raised the motion?
Dr. McFadden, and second by Mr. Reno.
Okay.
Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Duncan. Next on the agenda, oh, good. Item eight, executive session for the purpose of personnel matter. Madam Superintendent.
I am, we are requesting to go into closed session for a personnel matter.
Mr. President, I move to go into executive session.
Support.
Moved by Dr. McFadden to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matter, second by Ms. Collins. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matter? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. The meeting, pardon?
Eight nineteen.
The meeting is going into executive session at eight nineteen. Thank you, sir. Moved by Dr. McFadden to come out of executive session, second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Call the roll.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Come on.
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Meeting is out of executive session at eight fifty-nine. End of PM. Madam Superintendent, what is your recommendation?
The recommendation is the, is for the board to approve consideration of non-renewal of Matthew Lucas' contract.
You heard, moved by Member Monk, second by, I heard something to my left.
Can you give it to Dave? Me or Dave?
We'll give it to Ms. Collins.
Okay.
Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? The motion on the floor is to consider non-renewal of administration, administrator's contract.
Does consideration come back up for Robert Nick Monk or something?
No, this is the consideration, it will not be a consideration that comes up. It will be a recommendation. Any further questions? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to go into executive session for discussed attorney-client communications.
Support. Too fast. Moved by Dr. McFadden, second by Mr. Monk, go into executive session for the purpose of attorney-client communications. Any questions on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. The board goes into executive session at nine oh one. This moved by Dr. McFadden to come out of executive session, supported by Ms. Walker. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor to come out of executive session? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Meeting is out of executive session at nine thirty.
Mr. President?
What?
I move to go into closed session for negotiations update.
Support. It's been moved by Dr. McFadden to go into executive session for the purpose of negotiations update. It was second by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns, on the motion on the floor? Who put this agenda together? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Do I want to do this?
Yes. The meeting is in executive session at nine thirty. All right.
President?
No. Yes. Dr. McFadden? Yes, sir.
I move to come out of executive session.
Ms. Walker, you second it, don't you?
Yes. I do.
It's been moved by Dr. McFadden, second by Ms. Walker, to come out of closed session. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Out of executive session at nine, ten oh six. Moving the agenda, item eleven, business and finance, A, approval of general fund revised budget. Madam Superintendent?
You have in your packet a document that includes a section for revenues that are local, state, federal, and other expenditures in the state mandated category that we have an adopt a budget on. The first column was the budget that was approved back in June of 2021. You can see there, that budget had $22,717,663 of revenues, $22,138,138,230 of expenditures, with a projected surplus of $579,433. The revised budget that you're asking to be approved this evening has revenues, proposed revenues of $22,352,764. That's a decrease from the original budget of $364,899. Expenditures of $20,011,754, a decrease in expenditures of $2,126,476, for a surplus of $2,341,010, adding to a current fund balance of $1,232,000, would give us a fund balance of just over $3.5 million. Need to understand that that's possible, that surplus, because we're funding so much of our operations with ESRS funds, if, so in that budget, we have just about $3.8 million of general operational cost, wages, benefits, and other things that are being funded with ESRS money. Without that ESRS money, we would actually have a deficit of 1.4 million. So it's a big swing. The ESRS is helping us get financially stable and build our fund balance to do things in the future that we would, originally, when we talked about ESRS, things like roofs and that type of thing, we were planning on using that for ESRS, but out of ESRS money. But because of the timing of when those things can happen in the board retreat that's coming up on the 29th and 30th of April, I believe it's best to use the ESRS money to just fund operations, which is allowable, add the money to our fund balance, and then use money out of our fund balance to make whatever facility-type improvements and that type of thing that we need to make, once we know we have a direction on which, you know, where we're going for facilities, and what we're doing for grade levels and that type of thing. So that's why you see a big surplus, but it's a surplus, but it's only because of one-time Entertain any questions anybody has. I would tell you normally to, after this budget, when you get your next revised budget, you will see another column that says notes, and you'll have reasons why there are changes in those individual categories, but because I was not the one who put together the original budget that was adopted, and because there's very little paperwork that I had to look back on to see what was actually included in that original budget, I can't answer what was in it, so I can't compare it to what's in mine. But from now on, I'll tell you, there will be reasons why to explain to you what those changes are, those variances.
Any question? I noticed it was discussed at the finance committee, was it, or not, or was it not discussed?
One other thing I should know, once we adopt this tonight, and I send it into Department of Treasury, we will be taken off their list. We will not have any more financial reporting obligations to the Department of Treasury, which we haven't had that in several years since we were in deficit and came out of deficit. That's a good thing.
Yes, no doubt. Any questions? The chair would entertain a motion regarding the approval of the general fund revised budget as presented.
I move to approve, I move for the approval of the general fund revised budget.
Support.
Moved by Dr. McFadden, second by Ms. Walker. Any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing and seeing, hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twelve, policy committee. Thank you, Mr. President, and I am glad this is a short, so I don't have that much to read. We've been here for a minute, so. We have the spring revised and new policy updates from NEOLAR, and they are those as follows. Policy 1616, staff dress and grooming, new. Policy 3216, staff grooming and, staff dress and grooming revised. Policy 4216, staff dress and grooming revised. Optional language has been added to the state. What is legally required with regard to enforcing the dress code in a nondiscretionary uniform manner, and affirming an employee's right to dress in accordance with their gender identity within the constraints of the adopted dress code. The added language is an option because there is no requirement to include such language in policies or administrative guidelines. Implementation of such measures is required in accordance with the state principles, whether they are in writing or not, in order to comply with Title IX and Title VII. Policy 5511, staffs dress and grooming revised. Again, optional language has been added to the state. What is legally required with regards to enforcing the dress code in a nondiscretionary, nondiscrimatory, uniform manner, and affirming an student's right to dress in accordance with their gender identity within the constraints of the adopted dress code. The added language is an option because there is no requirement to include such language in policy and administrative guidelines. Implementation, such measures is required in accordance with the state principles, whether they are in writing or not, in order to comply with Title IX and Title VII. Policy 6110, grant funds revised. This policy has been revised to include the latest changes in the Education Department General Administration Regulations, EDGAR. Specific requirements for maintenance of effort, MOE, and maintenance of equality, MOE quality, will need to be documented and provide at the time of audit and specific funded programs, ESRS, GEAR, et cetera. This revised, this revised policy reflects current EDGAR provisions and should be adopted to maintain accurate policies. Policy 6414, cost principal spending, federal funds revised. Policy 6325, procurement, federal grants, funds revised. These policies have been revised to include the latest changes to the Education Department General Administration Regulation, EDGAR, specific prohibitions regarding costs incurred for telecommunications and video surveillance services or equipment are included, along with the David Bacon privilege wage provisions for contracts in excess of $2,000 related to construction, alterations, repairs, et cetera. This revision reflects current EDGAR provisions and should be adopted to maintain accurate policies. Mr. President, I submit the following policies for a first reading to the Board of Education. Policies sixteen thirteen, Policy thirty-two sixteen, Policy forty-two sixteen, Policy fifty-five eleven, Policies sixty, sixty-one ten, Policies sixty-one fourteen, and Policies sixty-three twenty-five.
Been moved by Mr. Monk, is there a second?
Support.
Second, Dr. McFadden. Any questions? Yeah, Mr. Monk?
Yes, sir.
And I'll, I'll read it more in detail. Policy forty-two sixteen and fifty-five eleven?
Mm-hmm.
Are those state or federally mandated policies, or, or, or what?
Those are states.
Okay, if they're state mandated, you, you, you had some options.
There's options.
Are those options presented by the state?
Yes.
And so...
And, and those options, yeah. And those options pertain to Title Nine-
Right, right.
And Title Seven.
Yeah.
For us to be, what's my word I'm trying to use? In compliance. So we need to be in compliance with Title Nine-
Got you, okay.
And Title Seven.
Because you said the options, you know, I said, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any additional questions? On the first, adoption of the first reading? Hearing a se- none, call or roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Next on the agenda, informational items. Item thirteen, Business Committee, A, The Financial Report. Any questions, comments, or concerns regarding the financial reports? I know that financial reports were reviewed at the Finance Committee. That's my guess.
The budget column does include the budget numbers of the budget that you just adopted, the revised budget. So that is a change from the previous model.
Anything else from the Business Committee? Item fourteen, Superintendent's Comments.
I'd like to begin my comments by thanking the Seminole staff for all their work and their support these past few weeks. It's amazing. It's amazing how each teacher and all of our staff members are doing, and I'm experiencing a real family who has each other's back. They support each other, and they provide moral support when needed, and they provided a lot for me, so thank you. I'm truly humbled and grateful to the staff and for the staff at Seminole. Well, potholes and testing season are here in Michigan. I can't do anything about the potholes, except for a couple in our parking lot we're working on, but I can let you know when our students will be tested. Students in grades three through ten will participate in the following assessments. M-Step, English Language Arts and Mathematics, in grades three through seven. PSAT eight-nine, grade eight. M-Step, Science and Social Studies, in grades five and eight this year. PSAT eight-nine, grade nine. PSAT ten, grade ten. Our grade eleven students will participate in the Michigan Merit Exam, and it has three required components. The first is the SAT with essay. It's a college entrance exam, and it also measures ELA and math standards for the state of Michigan. ACT Work Keys and Work Skills Assessment. M-Step, Science and Social Studies. So, the next thing I would like to talk to all of you about, and maybe open the floor for a discussion, is masks. Can you believe that it's been two years, almost to the day, really, since we had those initial closures due to COVID nineteen? The time has flown by, and it's also dragged on for all of us. Many of our families, our, our school families, our staff families, and our children have had great hardships due to COVID nineteen. We have been online, hybrid, and now we're back full face-to-face, and I hope we are turning a corner on this public health tunnel. Mount Clemens Community Schools has done an amazing job in keeping our kids, staff, and community safe. We have had zero cases of COVID nineteen in the past few weeks here in our district, and I would like to open a discussion with the board to discuss the possibility of going mask optional beginning March, March twenty-first, or Monday. At the end of February, the CDC made some new recommendations that included K-12 schools. There were metrics to the community, about the community, and the spread of COVID nineteen, and tonight I'd like to discuss some of those metrics with all of you. For low transmission, the recommendation is to wear a mask based on your personal preference informed by your personal level of risk. Medium transmission is if you are immunocompromised or at a high risk of severe illness, to talk to your healthcare provider and, about wearing masks or respirators indoors or in public. If you live or have social contact with someone at a high risk for severe illness, please consider testing yourself, and I have more tests available, before getting together and wearing a mask when indoors with people who are immune compromised. Currently, in Macomb County, we have less than a four percent rate of COVID infections. There are fifty-eight cases a day, and we are considered, I just met with Dr. Lowkire every Wednesday, my soup's call, and we are at the very low end of the medium category. And then, of course, the high category, which would be everyone would wear a well-fitting mask indoors, in public, regardless of vaccination status or risk. So currently, in Macomb County and in neighboring counties, the transmission rate is very low. It's actually medium, but in the low end of medium transmission. And in Macomb County and other counties as well, we are the only district that is still requiring and mandating masks. So I would just like to open a conversation with the board to see what your thoughts are.
Say, we're, we're in the medium, low medium?
We're in the low-medium range.
We're in a low-medium.
Yeah, we have less than four percent in the county.
We're in a low-medium, and we're the only district in Macomb County who still have a mask mandate.
Yes.
I think it's time for us to get on board with everybody else.
Do we have-
I think we did a good job.
We did a great job.
But I think we need to get on board with everybody else.
Do we know? Or have any idea if we have any students that are immunodeficient, or someone who would be compromised if they were exposed, or if we, you know, went from-
Yes.
Uh, mask?
Um, so, so there may be some students who might be immunocompromised, and in those situations, if there is a student, then we would require masks as well. And some of our staff members may also need to have or be more comfortable if their students wore masks, and of course, we would support that as well.
Okay. You brought a question to me. Since if we do away with the mandatory mask, and an adult, a teacher, somebody, an adult in the building wants somebody to wear a mask, and it's, we're no longer mandatory. How does that play out? And why would they demand them to wear a mask when it's no longer mandatory? I'm just throwing out scenarios.
Yeah. It's a, that's a really good question, and, and what, what we would do as, at the district level and at the school level is support that teacher and support that student. So if in my classroom, for example, if I am immunocompromised, I'm, you know, a cancer survivor, and I'm over sixty-five, oh, I should have never said that, right? Anyways, so I could be one of those teachers that would require the students in my class to wear a mask, and those parents would be informed, and those students would be required to wear a mask.
That is the most important communication that needs to happen.
Mm-hmm.
I think if you are open, transparent, and informative to the parents, they would support whatever we do. Especially if they have a teacher who's immunocompromised. I know my students, and say, okay, my son, my daughter's gonna wear a mask.
Right.
But that has to be communicated, and that can't be left, oh, we thought the parents, or we gonna put a note in the backpack, thinking parent going, I mean, that's a, like, you know, that's a real mandatory communication that needs to happen.
It doesn't, which is why I wanted to wait till Monday, just to make sure that I know and that we're aware if there's any issues, and that'll give us a couple days to get that together.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I still have problems with, it'd be, if we're not mandatory, you're not mandatory. It'd be, you, if I prefer you have a mask on in my class, that's one thing, but we're taking the mandatory off, so wouldn't it be up to the teacher to have a mask on to protect himself?
That's true, too.
Mm-hmm.
Because you could get, you know, parents, you know, hey, no, my kid does not, there's no mandatory, and the mask mandatory is no longer in place, so no, I don't want my student wearing that mask in Mr. J's class. Mr. J need to wear his mask if he feels threatened. I'm just trying to, you know, think of, you know, scenarios and stuff that, you know, that could potentially, you know, come, come down the line.
If we go, if we go to non-mandatory, we're non-mandatory.
So, but it could be mandatory within a particular teacher's classroom, and especially if there are children or their teacher is-
But you can't have one, you can't have, if either mandatory, you're not, right now, we're mandatory.
Now you got two, two different.
So now, you know, you're running down two different tracks, you know?
I think if you're-
Could be mandatory in this class, but not everywhere else. We're adding complication to it, I think.
It has to be an individual protection by the teacher-
About it, yeah.
And optional for the students.
That's-
Only way it can be. Can, can we just talk honestly here?
Mm-hmm.
Are these kids really wearing these masks? Because I know when I walk through here, some are, some aren't. I walk through here, some adults are, some adults aren't. I'm fed up with wearing this thing, and I've got the booster shot, I'm double, you know? I mean, you go to Walmart, Kmart, go in another store, they all, I mean, everybody has relaxed, and I think we, this is my personal opinion. I'm speaking for myself. I think we need to take that barrier out of the way. Because we did a great job. We were the first ones who went mandatory.
We were.
We did an excellent job, but I think we need to move in a direction of county, CDC, Johns Hopkins, because they all saying the same thing.
I don't have any particular issues with dropping the mandate for masks, but if we do that, I definitely would want to track numbers.
Oh.
Uh, and, you know, despite, you know, and if stuff starts to go-
Yep.
The wrong direction-
Right.
You know, we got to go back, you know?
We have plenty of masks.
To the mask situation.
Yeah, we can always go back to a mandate, if we need to.
We can.
And I would, I would like it to be very strongly encouraged. I think it's good language rather than optional.
Right.
Very strongly encouraged.
Right, that's, that's a good point.
Encourage our, our families, our students, and our staff to, to be socially responsible, you know, to, to the extent of, of, of their, of their capability. And I'd, I'd spend my night at the grocery store.
I do, too.
Can we, can we ask the-
Me, too.
The union their opinion or not?
No.
At this time?
No.
So let me ask you, Superintendent, what, what, what is the consensus of the staff?
I, I think the staff are tired. I think they're tired of talking through a mask. I think that when you look at some of our little guys especially, they need to be able to read your lips and see you when you talk to them and help explain, especially with reading. I know that when I've had kids in my office at Seminole, and they're little guys, I have to ask them to take their mask off because I can't understand them when they speak with the mask on. So there is that, and then there's the meltdowns, like some kids are having trouble with lots of issues, and the mask, honestly, is one more thing.
So you're proving my point, whereas when I said it's time for us to remove the barrier.
Yeah.
Mask, listen to you right now, mask is a barrier right now.
But we can always reinstate if our numbers go up, and I get the numbers every Friday from the, from the secretaries and-
What would you recommend?
I-
What, what would you recommend to the board?
Um, I would recommend that we remove the mask mandate, but that we strongly recommend that people continue to wear masks if they feel that they that, I strongly recommend to help prevent spread of disease, but it's just like any other flu season, you know? Who got sick these last two years? I didn't.
You had masks, you had on masks, that's why.
The masks made a difference. They made a difference, so.
But-
But I'm looking at, they all have their masks off.
They, 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 they predicting the future.
How many, how many masks do we have in supply?
I, I have no idea. A lot.
We got a lot.
We have plenty. We have plenty.
I mention that because even though we may go with, well, with the mask mandate being lifted and optional, don't go throwing them away.
No.
No, oh, no, 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 no.
I mention that because if you look at the local news recently-
Oh, yeah.
The world news, there's a lot of cities in different countries that are going back on lockdowns for communal diseases.
Right.
So we may need to be prepped and ready, you know, with something in the chamber makes it happen.
Right. Yep. Oh, yeah, we have them.
I, I think, you know, it was a, it was a decision and a vote by this board to make us mask mandatory. This decision, if we make it tonight, it, it shouldn't be convoluted, you know, that we highly recommend the mask. Well, if you highly recommend, that's like, almost like mandating. Um, you know, that's got to be up to each and everybody's, you know, individual, you know, preference, I, I would believe, you know, because you gotta have it one, you can't have both ways, you know? Mand, you know, non-mandatory, but we highly recommend it. That, that's almost like mandatory to me, so it has to be up to, I believe, if it's non-mandatory, that's it. You know, mask is no longer mandatory.
Then we in motion, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. President, I move, by March twenty-first, we go with district-wide optional mask.
It was moved by-
I knew it was gonna get there.
I told you it was predict, I told you it was predicting the future.
I'm waiting for applause. Right, 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 right. Hey, we finally did something right.
It's been, it's been moved by Dr. McFadden to, beginning March the twenty-first, the district mask will be what you, optional.
Optional.
Wearing a mask in the district will be optional. Did somebody, did you sec, it was seconded by Mr. Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hey, this is not March the twenty-first yet.
I will make one statement like we talked about. If we see, if the superintendent sees a uptick, then we will look at-
Change in the direction.
Yeah, change in direction.
Yeah, yeah.
So what percentage would that, would you consider? If we're at four percent now, would it be six percent, seven percent, if it rises?
I think, we talked, this came up, I think it was like seven percent last time. If it gets around with our, that's when you really came and said, hey, guys, I think we need to get back to-
I'll bring it back to you. We'll, I, I, you'll get the numbers every week, I'll let you know what's going on.
Because my concern is, because everybody has these home tests, it's not actually being reported to the state or whatever. That's just my concern. A lot of them take these home tests, think I'm positive, and not reporting it to the correct officials.
Mm-hmm. That is a problem. I agree.
That's just, that's just me.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I made that motion on March twenty-first. Why did we pick the twenty-first?
I just wanted a couple days to see if there were some teachers, if there were some issues within particular classrooms, but we can do it tomorrow, but I don't know that I'll have a letter ready to go to, out to families by tomorrow, so if-
You got a letter.
The motion on the floor is, the motion on the floor is March twenty-first. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing a se- none, call or roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Torino?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries.
See how he pulled his mask down, he's- I caught that. He ended up all his time.
Madam Superintendent, we still on the Superintendent's Comments?
Oh, I'm, I'm done.
You're done, thank you. Item fifteen.
I'm sorry, what?
Did you want to mention board retreat?
Oh, yes, the board retreat is April twenty-ninth and thirtieth at-
Fairfield Inn?
The Fairfield Inn, which is right around the corner from here. It's off of M-59, it's very close. It'll start with dinner at about six o'clock.
You said April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-
Yeah.
April twenty-ninth, it's a Friday.
Why so far away?
That was the only one that everyone said that they-
Yeah, we, we did a doodle, um, so, and then- Um, so, and then we'll be going through Saturday afternoon.
All right.
Thank you.
Item fifteen, committee reports. Any additional information from the Business and Finance Committee? All right. Mr. Lenninbear. And Mr. Lenninbear again. Thank you. Any additional information from the Curriculum Personnel Committee?
Nope.
Uh, we just had everything from the policy, correct, Mr. Monk?
I got some additional comments.
Okay, here we go.
And I'll make it quick. Um, I have passed out everybody have in front of them, uh, the committee notes. Um, we discussed the things that are on there. If you go down to other, and I'll make it quick, we actually discussed the Interscholastic Athletics Policy, twenty-four thirty-one, AG twenty-four thirty-one A and AG twenty-four thirty-one B. In lieu of what happened last, um, uh, week, we had some, we had some discussion, and what I did is that I pulled these policies. You know, it was something that our Neola representatives said at our policy when we met with the Superintendent Paul. Policies keep you out of trouble. Policies keep you out of trouble. Our policies, our, our, our requirement to become an athlete in this district is higher than the state standard. And that was put into place how long ago, Mr. Ricklin?
Over, over thirty years ago.
And from me being a former coach, I coached here eleven years, um, it works. And I was reading through it, and it says, since the primary purpose of an athlete, athletic program is to enhance the education of participating students, that's why they call them student athletes. Student athletes. Um, and how it works is that you have two card markings. If you're eligible in a card marking between the next card marking, there's what we do, is we do progress reports. And a progress report tells the student, tells the coach, tells the A.D., and tells the principal if that student is staying at the level that it needed to be at. Progress reports. It's not a grade, you're not asking the teacher to give, it's a progress report. I've done them. And progress reports usually, you send all, if I had a girls' basketball team, I had six players, they would go down to the office on Friday morning, get the blue sheet, and they had to get it signed by every single teacher, or they didn't play. And that happened for years, and it worked. Now, I don't know, Superintendent, if that blue progress report is still, I mean, that progress sheet is still around? It should be, and with the A.G., I didn't find it, but, you know, that's what happens. And adopting policies upon recommendation administered which reflect the district's educational objectives and promote the ideals of good sportsmanship, ethics, and integrity. That's what, that's what the grade point average does. And I did some more research in the, uh, in the A.G.'s, okay? Responsibilities. One, the head coach shall maintain an accurate and current squad roster and submit copies to the athletic...
I think it's gonna be quick.
It is gonna be quick, but this is important.
But you're going over, you know-
I, I get her.
The notes of, notes of the policy instead of, you, you're going through the process as opposed to the notes from, from the policy committee meeting. That's all I'm saying, sir.
I yield the floor back to the chair. That's what happens when we don't discuss the tough things, we just kinda, we don't discuss the tough things.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. The Legislative Committee, County Committee, met last night. I could not go because I had another board meeting I had to attend. Next on the agenda, Board Comments. Ms. Collins?
I don't have any comments this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. O'Neal?
I don't have any.
No comments for me.
Any comments, Mr. Monk?
No.
Thank you, sir. Dr. McFadden?
No comment.
I would like to, uh, thank, give kudos to Steven Sapp Jr. of Nichols and Sapp for the donation of the two thousand dollars to go towards the Cedar Point Science Club There is a MISD budget hearing on April the first, and each district can have a representative attend the budget hearing on April the first. In the past, this board has generally divvied that responsibility and assignment to the Board Treasurer. If you're willing and able to accept that, Ms. Walker, fine. If not, I would be, uh, willing to substitute if you're unable to do so.
I am good.
Okay, so, Mr. Shepherd has all the details for you.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. I would, um, like to say congratulations to the board, the boys and girls' basketball teams for a successful season, and I would like to give special kudos, uh, special shout-outs to the Lady Bathers for winning the district championship. Based on the information Mr. Monk was sharing about the eligibility, et cetera, um, we had some issues where neither one of the teams were able to continue in the playoff because of a lack of a number of students eligible to participate in the activity. Those are my comments.
Moved to a jar?
Moved by Dr. McFadden.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Walker. Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neal? Ms. Ricklin?
Yes, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at, let's see, ten?
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.